This is a very busy scheduled meeting. Princeton zoning board of the Grafton, which is being held on Wednesday, April 4th, May 2017, 7:30 PM to the municipal complex. Let's go on to Section 13 of the open policy. You need to add a little notice for the timing. Please, as this regular evening, as we provide it, my attorney will be displaying the schedule. We've got a meeting on Thursday, August 4th, Monday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Thursday. And Shriver, copy of the schedule, Princeton tactic, um, coffee, drink, decline, drink, coffee, talk about the table, and you have these pink copies to the corporate files. You explode to the prince. You call the board, please, Claudia.
Ms. Clayton?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Calliden?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. Shriver?
Here.
Ms. Suri? Mr. Tenenbaum?
Here.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have some busy work to begin with. We have the minutes of January the 25th, 2017. You were given them last time to take home with you. I made a few minor corrections and they're presented to us again this evening with those mainly spelling and word change incorporated. Is there, are there any other changes necessary? If not, I'd like a minute, a motion to accept the minutes as presented and a second to that motion.
So moved.
I have a motion to accept.
I second it.
I have a second to that motion. Would you call the roll for us then, Claudia?
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Calliden?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next thing we need to do is to affirm a resolution, I believe.
Chairman Royce, let me just explain why this is on the agenda tonight. I am going to recuse myself from the second application you have tonight. It's 801 State Road. I, the homeowners association of which I'm a member owns an open space lot which is directly adjacent to the project. So in order to avoid any appearance of a conflict, I'm going to recuse myself and Mr. Gibbons has agreed to fill in for me this evening.
Okay.
So that's why it's on the agenda tonight.
Yes, we actually got to meet him a little earlier, so that's good. Do I need to read this resolution or just state that it is a resolution by the zoning board appointing a special counsel to term? Yes, okay. You have that document in front of you. If there are no objections to this appointment, which we will need to continue this evening, I'd like a motion to approve as presented and a second to that motion and then Claudia will call the roll.
I'll make a motion to...
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Tenenbaum, would you just call the roll for us?
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Calliden?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. The next two resolutions, 132 Elm Road, which had the case number Z1717-467. You have a copy of this resolution in your handouts and if there are no changes or corrections required, I'd like a second, a motion and a second for that.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve, the second for that motion.
A second.
We have a second for the motion, Mr. Floyd. So Madam Attorney, maybe you can call the names of people eligible to vote.
I will. Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
The second resolution is the 214 Moore Street and that carries the case number I had to recuse myself or I recuse myself, that's right. So I guess I can accept a motion and a second to the motion and then our attorney will call the appropriate names. Are there any changes needed or is it acceptable as presented? A motion? Mr. Floyd?
I move to accept the resolution.
We have a motion, a second for the motion.
I'll second it.
We have a second for the motion.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
All right. So that's the busy work out of the way and now we get to the real busy work. The first case we hear this evening is 420 Mount Lucas Road. The case number for that is Z1717-468. And if you'll come and sit in the front, push the bottom of the microphone so a little green light glows. And what I'll do is to ask Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum into the record for us and then we'll ask you to present your case.
Okay.
I'll note for the record that the noticing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application. We'll swear you in, Mr. Bridger. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful? Thank you.
The applicant, applicants Gretchen Godwin and Joseph Ciuffalo are the owners of 420 Mount Lucas Road. They are requesting a hardship variance in accordance with C1 to permit the placement of an air conditioning condenser in exception to the required side yard setbacks. Property is located in the RB zone, subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with Sections 10B, 253, 255, and 246 of the former Princeton Township land use ordinance. The existing single-family use is permitted as of right. The subject lot is noncompliant with respect to the following bulk requirements. Lot area, whereas the requirement's 130,000, 680 square feet, the existing lot's 10,000 square feet. The lot width requirement's 200 feet, the existing is 50 feet. Lot frontage requirement's 200, existing's 50, and lot depth requirement is 250 and the existing's 208 feet. And the subject property is noncompliant with respect to the right side yard setback where as required is 35, the existing's eight feet. Left side yard setback requirement against 35, the existing is nine feet. Excuse me, the right side yard setback for the garage, the requirement should be 35 and it's 25. The left side yard setback for the garage is 35 and it's 10 feet. And the rear yard setback pertaining to the garage is 35 feet and the existing is 30 feet. The applicant has converted the existing garage to an area for art, yoga, studio, et cetera. Garage can still accommodate a car and function as a garage. They recently had an air conditioner installed and the contractor came and applied for a building permit and they were notified that a zoning permit was needed. And I was unable to approve that application. The lot width is noncompliant. It didn't meet the required 35-foot setback. So the lot's 50 feet, the combined side yard setbacks equals 75 feet. So basically anything they do on this property requires some kind of variance relief. The setbacks actually overlap each other. The proposed setback is 25 feet on the right and 20 on the left and they're requesting a C1 variance. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bridger? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, if you would like to succinctly tell us what you'd like to do, I think we understand.
Okay.
Sir, if you would just state your name for the record and then we'll swear you in.
Yes, my name is Joseph F. Ciuffalo.
And Mr. Ciuffalo, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Everything you heard Mr. Bridger say is correct. I don't have a whole lot to add to that other than the fact that our lot is exceptional to the neighborhood. It's not a lot that is normal to the neighborhood. So we're asking basically for, it's a request for the hardship variance due to the exceptional narrowness of our particular lot. And we don't feel that if you approve this variance for us that it will be any detriment to the neighborhood or any go against the intent of your zoning restrictions and so forth for our zone that we're in, the RB zone. So we're simply asking for an approval of this variance to allow this HVAC unit to exist next to our garage and that's pretty much it unless you have other questions.
I assume that you haven't tried to buy an additional piece of land from your neighbor with a large plot to make your lot conforming.
No, no, that's one thing I didn't think of, but...
I noticed you have a horizontal discharge from the fan which will be towards the neighbor's house. You've got a big enough, more or less, setback. Have you considered putting a barrier some distance away from that to confine the noise transfer to the next lot?
There's a fence right between our property, yes.
I didn't manage to get to see the site.
Yeah, I didn't take a picture of the fence, but just between our property and our neighbor, there's a fence.
That's your fence?
I'm sorry?
Is it your fence or the neighbor's?
Yes, we had a direct...
It's yours?
Yes.
Okay. So that will act to diminish the...
Right, it's invisible unless they send a drone over to see it, otherwise they can't see it.
Yes, good. Do we have any questions or any further questions as I jumped in as I always do? Is there anyone in the audience here to address this case? Okay, well, what we'll do is to go into executive session and see if we can spell C.
Okay.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, have the neighbors, have you discussed this with the neighbors at all? Have they mentioned to you?
The two homes on either side of us are vacant currently. I did send out the required letters by certified mail to everyone within the 200-foot radius. Have not heard any issues from any neighbors and so as far as I know, nobody's concerned about it, but wait and see.
I want to make sure. I drove by earlier today and I think I had the right house, but is it the one with the for sale sign in front of it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
I guess I just want to make one comment. It seems, it seems a little unfair that this person, that this homeowner has to come before us for this considering that their lot is completely exceptional to the zone. And in fact, you know, within that zone with those setbacks, they couldn't even build anything on the lot at all. So I guess I just wanted to say that for the record. It seems like this could have been done administratively and maybe that we could add that into our memo at the year end. Conditions like, you know, cases like this, it seems a shame for the homeowner to have to pay the money and to come here for something like this. Anyway, but I'll also say that I would make a motion to approve the application for a variance for the HVAC unit if we're ready to do that.
So you're making a motion to round to C1, is that right?
Yes.
Is there a second for that motion?
I second.
Okay, is there any discussion of the motion? All right, so would you call the roll for us, Claudia?
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Ms. Calliden, Mr. Calliden?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just in time for summer.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Good. Okay, so the second case of the evening is 801 State Road, which is a pair of lots, 17, 18, in block 901. And this carries the case number Z1616-377. Yes, we do have an easel for you. If you come and sit down, we've had a change of the timing. And what I'll get you to do is to allow Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum into the record and then I'll ask you to start presenting your case. And I assume that you have checked and his paperwork is in order and we can legally hear his case.
I, Mr. Chairman, I have and everything is in order and the board has the jurisdiction to hear the application.
So you're still under oath, Mr. Bridger?
Thank you.
And do this for us.
Yes, sir. Application has been filed by State Road Plaza LLC to seek preliminary and final major site plan approval for the development of an 18,000 square foot mixed-use two-story building. Site was formerly used as a construction staging yard and is currently vacant. Site is identified as lots 17 and 18. Consists of 2.31 acres, is located on the south side of Route 206. Subject property is bounded in the north by various retail uses and Petro Oil Company to the south by the old Orchard Residential Townhouse Development and to the east by office buildings. In the west is an adjacent vacant lot. Site plan has been filed for that lot for a liquor store. Applicant is proposing an 18,656 square foot two-story mixed-use building. First floor, 9,000 approximate square footage will consist of a resident, a restaurant and retail uses. The sixth retail suites will range in size from 1,200 to 2,100 square feet in front on State Road. The second floor will contain 9,500 square feet of office space with four self-contained office suites which range in size from 1,265 to 2,700 square feet. Here's 101 or 2 parking space lot will surround the building. Site improvements include landscaping around the parking lot, dumpster, trash enclosure, lightage, and signage. Property is located in the S2 zone and subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with Sections 10B, 246, 271, 272, 283, and 284. The proposed office and retail uses are both permitted uses. The restaurant with 24 seats is not a permitted use. The project will require the following variances. The proposed restaurant with seating is not a permitted use in the S2 and it requires a use variance, a D1 which controls a use or a principal structure in a district restricted against such use. As you're aware, no variance or other reef may be granted under the terms of this section unless such variance or other reef leave can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. There's several bulk variances required. There's a front yard setback variance requirement of 25 feet and the proposed is 23.7. There's a side yard requirement of 60 on the east side, the proposal is 56. Side yard setback on the east side also for the trash enclosure, the requirement is 60 and it's 12 feet. Section 10B, 289 requires that all on-grade parking lots with more than 10 spaces shall have shade trees planted and maintained to the extent of one tree for each 3.4 spaces. The required tree planting is 30, the proposed is 13, a variance is required. And then Section 10B, 288, which requires that screening from adjacent use is not separated by a public right-of-way shall be accomplished by installation and maintenance of evergreen and deciduous trees and shrubs which will, within two growing seasons, produce a solid screening at several appropriate heights. The applicant is rather proposing to utilize the existing five-foot board-on-board fence on the adjacent property to the northeast and the board must determine if this is appropriate and adequate. And finally, Section 10B, 283 requires that there shall not be less than one loading dock for each 10,000 square feet of gross floor area or a fraction thereof, thereof over 8,000 square feet. Thus, two loading docks are required whereas one is proposed. The landscaping plan was reviewed by the town's landscaping consultant and the plan reflects the removal of four trees on the southern edge of the parking lot and calls for the planting of 13 shade trees around the lot. As I indicated earlier, the requirement for replanning is 30 trees or that there was concern that the lot does not, the design of the lot and the site does not permit the planting. The applicant is requesting a waiver and intends to utilize existing five-foot fence on the neighbor's property. We would like to see the trees planted and I'm just going to hit some of Dan Dobramilsky's comments, the landscape architect. The pyrrhus calariana and Acer sacrum species of trees are not appropriate for this application due to the invasive threat of the pyrrhus and intolerance for road salt with the Acer species. The applicant should consider non-invasive native species. Staff does not support a waiver and suggests that the applicant work with staff to plant more trees on site and in the alternative, this is not appropriate. Make a payment to the shade tree fund. Section 10B, 289 requires that an area equivalent to four parking stalls within the parking lot be planted with evergreen ground cover. Three of the areas of the parking lot are planted with this evergreen cover, but the spacing of the plants in these areas is not sufficient to properly fill the space. Additional space must be planted with evergreens. Shrubs at spacing of two feet on center of the island on the south of the building near the loading dock shall be landscaped in accordance with the ordinance and the planning of the plantings in the other islands should be revised to comply with the ordinance's requirements. We ask that the applicant look at redesigning the trash enclosure so that the island complies with the ordinance of a 9x19 island. If the trash enclosure cannot be moved to comply with the ordinance, the applicant should work with staff to create a plan that provides a more appropriate separation between the parking spaces and the trash enclosure. And the applicant should work with staff to provide more plantings in the front of the parking lot to provide screening and separation of the parking lot from the public right-of-way in accordance with Section 10B, 288. Screening and enclosure of the trash enclosure must be reconsidered. The proposed wooden material is not a durable material for this application and the chain link gate with slats is not aesthetically pleasing. The arborvitae trees proposed as screening are highly susceptible to deer foliage damage and alternative screen planting should be selected. Staff comments are, a note should be added to landscape lighting plan. All non-essential lights be turned off by 11:00 PM and we request that the lights be LED. And the mounting of the lights on the parking lot should be shown, 14 feet is the maximum. The surface water drainage, stormwater management report was reviewed by land use engineer and the town's stormwater management consultant. We asked the applicant to address the issues that arise in that report. Driveway connections to the public street, we asked that the applicant move the transformer which is located to the right of the driveway approximately 10 feet to eliminate the conflict in the site triangle. And as far as pedestrian and bicycle safety, we requesting that the four-foot concrete sidewalk along Route 20, State Road be extended the entire frontage of the site. We're requesting two bike racks should be added to the plans, one in front of the building to accommodate a minimum of three bikes for the retail portion and one in the rear to accommodate a minimum of 10 for the office use. The site plan in parking indicates that there's 102 spaces. 9x19 will be installed, however, when we reviewed it, as did the traffic engineer, only 101 spaces are on the plan. The plan should be revised or a variance should be requested. The applicant's proposing a 24-seat restaurant. The applicant should identify which space this restaurant will be in and they may want to consider adding additional seating that is more appropriate for the space being utilized. We ask that the applicant consider installing an electrical vehicle charging station. A detail for the proposed fire lane should indicate a four-foot inch-wide yellow strip on each side of the fire lane. The plan depicts four handicapped accessible stalls, however, parking lot with this, 101 spaces, five handicapped are required. We ask that our comments and the general recommendations at the end of the report be included in the findings and resolution if the applicant, if the board is inclined to grant this hearing, right, to grant this application approval, excuse me. There's a couple more reports from some of the other boards. I'll go over Sprab's report. Sprab was in favor of the use variance for the food use restaurant, as many offices in the proximity to site would be well-served by a modest restaurant, including takeout. They also support the sidewalk on 206. They're requesting depressed curbs be provided between handicap parking spaces and the sidewalks surrounding the building. The applicant, in order to achieve the desired amount of parking spaces, the width of the trash enclosure could be reduced. That's a suggestion from Sprab. Sprab recommends the approval of the variances for the loading dock, one loading dock, the small front yard parking infringement and the side yard setbacks for the trash enclosure. The side yard setback for the building was not discussed. Sprab recommends additional plantings in front, including a hedge with a maximum height of three feet to screen cars without concealing them. The plantings for the rain garden should be clearly identified in the landscape plan, including the species. They also recommended that the species that the landscape architect recommend to be considered using different species than the applicant has proposed. The applicant should consider reducing the depth of the parking spaces to 16 feet in one of the rows in the rear of the building. This could provide an additional three feet of landscape between the pavement and the back fence for planting of additional trees. Copies of the NJDEP letter of interpretation of the wetlands, NJDOT approval for the main access drive, Mercer County, planning board approval and approval from the DRCC should be provided. Portion of the property has porous pavement. The details for this and any further development of the retention capacity should be settled with the municipal engineering and the stormwater consultant before the zoning board. And that's their applicant comments. Was reviewed by the traffic safety committee and they agreed with the suggestion to extend the sidewalk along State Road connected with the existing sidewalk in front of 900 Herentown. They recommend a concrete curb and sidewalk be extended through the site entrance. And they also recommend that the applicant contribute to the installment for a future rectangular rapid flashing beacon on State Road at the intersection of Herentown. Road has an off-track contribution. Requested that, they also request the applicant's engineer verify if there's adequate site distance to the north on State Road. The shade tree reviewed the application and they concurred with the replacement of the two species that were mentioned before. And finally, the environmental commission, they had recommended that the zoning board deny the side building variance due to the excessive parking impervious surface and recommend that the applicant reduce amount of parking impervious surfaces and in turn, size of building according to carry the capacity of the site. They also requested that the NJDEP flood letter hazard area verification should be provided before site plan approval. They're in favor of the pervious pavement, but they do have concerns about stormwater. And we suggest that the applicant work out these concerns with staff and the stormwater They asked that the applicant reduce the size of the impervious coverage by providing compact car spaces. They suggested bike racks for customers and employees and preferably with covered area for protection of employee bikes in inclement weather. And they requested that a bathroom with a shower stall and closed doors for bike riding employees and tenants to shower and change. They suggested organic waste bins be provided. Terms of energy, they requested the LED lights and they also requested electrical EV charging stations for EV and hybrid parking. They asked that the design include use of solar panels on the roof and rooftop equipment to reduce shading and maximize the area for the solar panels. They asked that the green building checklist and the recycling of materials and use of specifically environmentally friendly materials be utilized. And that's pretty much the staff's report and the various boards that have looked at the application. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bridger?
Or attempt to.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So your turn now.
Thank you very much. That's a lot to digest. Again, by way of introduction, my name is Bob Rodoff. I'm the attorney for the applicant this evening, State Road Plaza. As you've heard, this is an application for a use...
I can't hear you.
This is an application for a use variance, several bulk variances, and both preliminary and final site plan approval that would permit my client to... and final site plan approval that would permit my client to...
Is there a light coming on?
The light's on.
Lights on.
Lights on.
Just speak right into it.
Is this better?
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, good. Let me start all over again. This is an application for a use variance, several bulk variances, and both preliminary and final site plan approval that would permit my client to develop its lands as a two-story office/retail mixed-use center that would include a restaurant with seating for its patrons. Curiously, a use variance, and the reason we're here tonight before you, is because a use variance is required as your land development ordinance, while it permits restaurants, does not permit restaurants with seating. Why, I don't know, but that's why we're here. The property is known as 801 State Road. It consists of two lots, lots 17 and 18 in your block 901, and it's located in your S2 zoning district. This application has gone through quite a few iterations. There have been numerous meetings with staff on many... Over several years. My client has owned this property since the 1960s and has been to a countable number of meetings with various regulatory agencies because of the various constraints on this property, which we'll hear about this evening. But finally, we're here. We had a very good meeting with Sprab on April 12th, and Mr. Bridger just read their memo and were able to comply with all of their recommendations. We received the Mercer County Planning Board approval on March 8th of this year. We've also taken the opportunity to review all of the various staff memos submitted in connection with this application. There's a planning memo. I think that's undated. There's the stormwater management consulting memorandum dated March 27th regarding stormwater management. We've reviewed Dan Dobramowski's landscaping consultant's memorandum dated July 26th of last year. We have the report, the traffic report from IH Engineers dated March 30th of this year. We have reviewed the Shade Tree Commission report dated August 22nd of last year, and we've also reviewed the environmental commission report from August of 2016. The plans that you will see this evening are the ones that we have originally submitted, but we have superimposed per instructions from Sprab the revisions recommended by Sprab. So they're going to look a little busy, but I'll have the engineer go through those revisions in detail. I have planned to introduce and hear testimony from four individuals this evening. Seated directly to my left is Ed Buchi, who is a representative of the applicant, developer applicant. Jeff Carr, who's both a civil engineer as well as a planner, and he will testify as to the specifics of the site plan, as well as provide the planning fundamentals and rationale for granting all the variances with the applicant is requesting. Dan Ward, also seated to my left, is an architect licensed in the state of New Jersey. He obviously drew the plans, the four plans and the elevations. He will describe the building and the building layout to you. And lastly, we have John Ray, who's a traffic engineer for McDonough and Ray. He will clearly address the traffic-related issues in conjunction with this application. We also have NJDOT approvals as well as DEP approvals for this project. Still outstanding are the Delaware Raton Canal Commission approval, but we hope to meet with them on June 2nd to discuss this application. Those are my opening remarks, Mr. Chairman. We commence with our testimony. Would you prefer to have everyone sworn in at the same time or one by one?
You can do that.
Let's have everybody stand up. You're going to have to state your name. Mr. Givens will swear you in.
Please raise your right hand. The solace worth the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so I'll be God. All right. Individually, please state your names and spell your last names.
Okay, I'll start. Daniel Ward, the architect. D-A-N-I-E-L-W-A-R-D.
Okay, you can just spell your last name. Sir?
Ed Buchi, the UCCI.
Sir?
Jeffrey Carr, C-A-R-R. The special engineer, special panel.
Very good. Sir?
John Ray, R-D-A, with McDonough and Ray Associates. I'll be doing the traffic testimony.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Rodoffey.
All right. Thank you very much. Right. Mr. Buchi, could you please explain to the board who you are and what your relationship to the applicant is?
I'm the son... My dad is actually the applicant owner of the property.
And you are authorized to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
This property has been owned by your family for how many years? Do you recall?
I believe it's from the mid-to-late 60s.
Okay.
I'm having a job hearing. How many years was that?
From the mid to 1960s.
All right. And you have spent several years in discussions with several various regulatory agencies as well as Princeton, the then Princeton township, concerning the development of this property, correct?
Correct, yes.
And do you believe that you have finally come to a resolution with these various agencies and the consultants on how to develop these two lots?
Yes, I'm hopeful that we're finally close.
Okay. Have you taken the time to review all of the review memos submitted by the Princeton staff and its consultants?
Yes.
And did you attend the Sprab meeting with me on April 12th of this year?
Yes, I did.
And are you prepared to address each and every one of the issues in the review memos as well as the Sprab memo as it relates to your area of expertise in this project?
Yes.
Okay. Let to draw your attention to the site plan, which was prepared by Mr. Carr's firm, and I'd like to have that exhibit marked A1 and date it.
This is a point of local procedure. I just want to make sure I've got that. Please put A1 on that and date that for this evening.
As Joe said...
That would be fine.
Now, you may be able to answer my questions where you're seated, but if you want to, they have a remote microphone. You decide what is best for you, okay? I want to draw your attention to the exhibit, which has just been marked A1. Could you please describe to the board what A1 represents?
A1 is the engineering plan of a site.
Okay. And could you describe in your own words the site as it exists today? What's out there today if we took a ride over there this evening?
Today, it is basically compacted gravel and weeds with a stream in the back-left side of the property, and that is piped from the larger portion of the property.
Are there any improvements on the lot, or is it vacant?
No, no improvements.
It's vacant?
It's vacant.
Okay, thanks. Could you give a brief summary of your surrounding uses of these two lots?
As you know, the lot is an infill lot. Pretty much all the contiguous properties are developed. There are service zones, retail, office space, and not far away residential areas up off Harrington and Mount Lucas Road. Directly behind us is more office space, and from what I understand, there's been recently more new offices approved for development from actually our neighbor owns that property, Mr. Yedlin. So there's quite a bit of office space in that area.
And the property fronts on State Highway Route 206, correct?
Yes.
All right. Now maybe it's a better time for you to go over to the exhibit, because I'm going to ask you some specific questions about the proposed development referencing A1, which is the site plan. So this is your proposed site plan, which is prepared at your request, correct?
Correct.
Could you give the board just a brief, just a very brief overview? I'm going to have Mr. Carr go into a detailed explanation, description, but just give the board an overview of what you plan to develop on the site, starting with the access points from Route 206.
Mr. Rodoffey, just one question, just so I can clarify. That's just a color... That's simply a colorized version of the plans?
The plans that were submitted to the board.
Okay, just for the board's certification. Go ahead.
Start with the access.
Proceed.
Currently, the whole entire lot is open to Route 206, so we obviously would be developing it and landscaping it per the requirements, and then having the entrance on the northern end of the property.
And you have a DOT permit for that road opening?
Yes, DOT has approved that.
And could you point out the parking areas around the building?
Parking is surrounded around the entire building. Goes along the front, right against the building, not along 206. It's on both sides... I'm sorry, northern end is along the property line. The southern end is against the building and along the adjacent property. In the rear, there's parking along the building, and then there's parking along where the pipe area is, and then in the further part of the property.
All right. Now, this is a two-story building you're proposing, correct?
Correct.
What's going to be located on the second floor of the structure?
Second floor would be the office space, and the first floor would be retail.
And in addition to the retail, you also proposed a restaurant use, correct?
Correct.
All right. And you'd also like to have outdoor seating under the... Under the canopy of the veranda?
Under the awnings, yes.
The awning, under the front of the building. Now, it's your understanding that a restaurant is permitted, but no... A restaurant with seating is prohibited, correct?
Correct. Restaurants are permitted in the service room, but sit-down dining is not allowed currently.
Now, you've lived in the area, and you're familiar with this area for a long time, correct?
Yes.
And based on your familiarity with the area, in your opinion, is this site appropriate for the intended use of a restaurant with seating?
Yes, I believe so.
Now, you have proposed, you have applied for approval for a restaurant use with 24 seats, with 24 seats.
Correct.
And have you since considered increasing the number of seats, and if so, could you explain why?
Yes. We initially designed the parking to meet the ordinance without a variance required. So with the 102 spaces, we met that, and we are in that included 24 for a 24-seat restaurant. After the Sprab meeting and conversations we had with Mr. Bridger and some neighbors, they brought to our attention, they think we should request more because they think the need is there for more sit-down dining. So we changed the application to request an additional 24 seats, which would, I believe, require six additional spaces. So we would have to have a variance for six more parking spaces.
Okay. And you told me that, you did tell the board that you are familiar with the Sprab recommendations?
Yes.
And you have no difficulty complying with the recommendations from the Sprab meeting?
No, none at all.
Okay. Could you talk a little bit about the proposed signage for the building, because that was important to Sprab?
The signage in front to the pylon would be located here, and I believe Mr. Ward will testify with a sign design, preliminary sign design that we have, that is designed to meet the current regulations. Along the front of the building, when he has the architectural plan, will show the box signs on the facade of the building. Is it okay if I pull that out?
Sure.
Can I put it over top of that? Not yet. I think it's time.
All right, before you begin, I'm going to have to mark that exhibit as A2 and also Okay, and I've marked the exhibit as A2. Could you please describe to the board and identify what A2 represents?
A2 is a colored rendering of the building.
And that was prepared by your architect, who's going to testify later on tonight?
Yes, it was prepared by Dan Ward.
Okay.
It's a front elevation of the building that shows the signage I was speaking about. We chose to use box signs in our design. We have a similar building we built in Hopewell Township. That's the same mixed-use type of building, and we found that this type of signs allow for changes so that the tenant only has to change the skin of the sign every time there's a tenant change, as opposed to taking the sign down, and then there being holes in the structure. If you drive around and see other retail buildings, you'll see some signs that have the actual letters that are illuminated, but when they change those signs, they leave holes in the building, and not many landlords repair those holes, and they look kind of hideous. So we decided, when I built that building, it was 12 years ago, to go with the box signs, and Sprab recommended that they not be black and white, which they wouldn't be, but we just did this to show where the signs would be located. They recommended that we allow the tenants use their colors in their logos, so let's say it was, for argument's sake, a Dunkin' Donuts, it's orange and brown. They recommended letting the tenants have that flexibility. So we really don't have much opinion on that. It would be... We listened to Sprab, we listened to your recommendations on that also, but we would like to keep the box signs, which are approximately 24 inches by about 18 feet. That would be in front of each store.
Okay. Now, I neglected to ask you, you're not new to the development business, are you?
No, I've been building for probably over 35 years, and my dad's been building for over 60 years.
And you have a development similar to this on Route 31 in Hopewell Township?
Yes. It's our building in Hopewell is a little larger than this, but it's basically a similar design. It has a covered walkway around that building, but it's a mixed-use office and retail, so very similar to this.
Okay. I have no further questions from you at this point, Ed. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Any members of the board have questions?
I do. Yes.
Where is the restaurant going to be? Which space?
On this particular plan, it's on this corner. It's located, it says pizza on it. However, we have two different food uses that people that we're talking to. Because we're so far out from getting this approved, no one is committing fully, and there's flexibility to where they could be in the building. So we have one tenant that wants to be on this corner, and believe it or not, the other tenant wants to be on the opposite corner. So there are similar uses, so we would probably only use one of those particular food uses.
Where is the outdoor seating going to be?
The outdoor seating would probably be a small area underneath these black awnings. So there would be really like, not a lot of seating, but like a two-top, high-top-type table setup out there. There's not a large area to put full seating, and it's... We would not... We would require them that they can't block the sidewalk access, so it would be very minimal.
Okay. Because it looks like the rendering, the elevation or the rendering you show is not consistent with the plan. There's no center projection on the site plan. It doesn't project out. Doesn't rear the building, I think. There is on the plan drawing that it's A1.
Can you see that? This is the offset.
I don't know, I'm just looking at the... I'm looking at the floor plan here, and it shows in the front of the building where the retail is, it doesn't show any projection. It's fine.
No, it is in the front. It's not in the rear.
If you could speak into your mics.
So the majority of the seating would be inside the restaurant?
Yes.
Yes.
It's fine. I mean, it's very limited seating out there. I understand that. That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking to see if the scale...
It doesn't... No, it doesn't. It's irrelevant, but the... There's minimal seating outside. That's fine.
Right. I believe the sidewalk is approximately eight feet wide, so there wouldn't be... To have enough for pedestrian traffic, it would be very minimal.
Just to be, just to be clear, if I understood from your testimony, you're planning on doubling the amount of seating in the restaurant from 24 to 48 and not increasing the parking spots?
Correct. We... That's what the variance would be for six spots, to increase that seating, as Sprab recommended that we go for. So we feel that there's more than enough parking, especially if the food use is something that's used in the evening, where the office space is probably mostly vacant, there's going to be a... Most of it will be empty. In our building that we have in Hopewell, it's... There's literally, the food use is the only use that's open at nighttime, and it's... Everything else is vacant. I think the doctor's offices are open two nights a week, but other than that, every other retail store is closed, so the parking at nighttime is not a problem.
Mr. Buchi, I just want to clarify...
Mr. Bucci, I just want to clarify for the record. You, so you wanna, you're gonna, you're gonna make this a 48-seat facility, and you're seeking to still use the 102 parking spaces?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that correct?
I, just so the board's aware, the, the notice that was provided will, will suit that. That's not a problem. The, uh, it does, it does permit the board to make that, uh, to make that, uh, kind of a determination, if it wishes, so you can go forward.
Okay.
And just, just so I'm clear on this too, when SBRAB mentioned they could live with 102, that was with the 48s? They knew about the outdoor seating at that time?
No. The, well, the outdoor seating is incorp- incorporated. So it's, in, in other words, if there was a restaurant with 48 seats, they would use 46 inside and two outside. So we didn't increase the, the number from the, what the variance request is. We still would need six, uh, spaces on the variance. When we went to SBRAB, we only applied for 24.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, 24 was in the 102, so we were clear with that.
Yes.
When we were there, they recommended, along with some other people, uh, and then, uh, one of the neighbors also said they believed we should require, request more seating, um, sit-down seating. So we did the calculation and came up with what we thought would be feasible. And some people even said we should request more, but we don't feel that, we don't have a user for more than that right now. So if someone came along and said they wanted to put a 4,000-square-foot restaurant there, they would have to come back and request more parking or variance. In that particular time, they could explain, then we have a flow of how the building's being used and the uses that are there. And then we would all be able to make, and make an educated decision on that, yes, the bu- the building's vacant at nighttime, so there is additional parking available. Um, so that's, that's why we only requested where we are today.
So two things. One, the, you, you keep talking about 102, but then everybody's looked at the plans, says there's only 101 on the plan, so has that been rectified?
That, the engineer would have to testify for it, because I've.
Okay. And then the second thing is, is that my understanding is it's, it's one parking place for every three people? So if you add another 24 seats, that's another eight parking spaces, you'd be asking for variance for not six?
I think the standard is, um.
Four.
One parking space for every four seats in the restaurant.
It's three.
We thought it was four.
Right. So the, if you, you're, so you're asking for a variance for eight additional parking places?
That is correct.
Right.
No, so it would be for eight then.
Right. Just so we're, I mean, I've gotta say, I'm a little confused about the discussion. The number of seats, even though it's not noticed, is going from 24 to 48.
That's right.
The request is going to be for a variance for, now that we've solved that it's one for every three, um, seats, an additional eight parking spaces?
Correct.
Rather than six.
Correct.
That's correct.
So, we, so it will, right, plus, right, assuming the one that's missed is, is included. So we're at 102, it'll be for 110 parking spaces?
Yes, we'll have the engineer clarify that.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Rodoff. And then Attorney Givens, you said, um, that the notice, that, that the addition, I, I mean, the notice doesn't include the 48 seats, it includes the 24, but that it's, uh, it, we're, we're able to, um, make a decision regardless of that. Did I hear you correctly?
The notice indicates, um, and the applicant prepared the notice, and you can confirm this, uh, that, uh, the applicant will seek, will seek any additional variances, waivers, and/or exceptions from those sections of Princeton's Land Use Ordinance as the vagaries the application may require, and which may require, may be required by the zoning board adjustment at the time of the public hearing. Uh, in my professional opinion, what you're doing in essence is you're altering the variance in the course of the public hearing, which is perfectly acceptable. You noticed that that may be necessary, and you noticed the public in that regard. So I believe the notice is sufficient that the board could make that determination.
And, uh, just also to clarify on the restaurant piece, so, so you can, the, the interior space you have set aside for the restaurant and the plans we have would allow for the, for the, e- expanding it to 48 seats without impacting how much commercial space there is for other uses? Is that correct?
That's correct. Um, I think I'm gonna have to bring up another.
Stop right there.
Is that, no?
I'll have the architect deal with that.
Yeah, you'd have to see the floor plan to understand, and the architect will probably testify to that, of, that nothing would change with the plan. I would. Thank you.
Do we have other questions at this point? I think you should go.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to the asset engineer. Thank you, Attorney.
Yeah. Let's give the microphone.
Mr. Bucci, you'll be sticking around in case there's other questions, right? You're, you're staying around, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's just my.
I take your seat.
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff, would you please state your name and your profession?
Yes, Jeffrey J. Carr, C-A-R-R, with, uh, principal with the firm of Lindstrom Diesel and Carr.
And your profession is?
Uh, I'm a licensed professional engineer.
Did you use the mic?
Hold on, I'm not.
I'm a licensed professional engineer and licensed professional planner, have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree from, uh, New Jersey Institute of Technology. I've been practicing both of these professions, uh, for over 35 years. And I have appeared before this board on, uh, in the past, not recently, but I have in the past. And I've, uh, worked on, uh, similar types of applications throughout the state of New Jersey.
Have you qualified to testify as both a civil engineer as well as a professional planner in various municipalities in this state?
Yes, I have.
Can you give the board approximately how many municipalities you've been accepted as an expert?
Lots.
Got to get a number.
Probably, eh, if I was to guess, I, I might have been before 100 different municipalities throughout the state. Uh, probably we've been in, uh, almost every county in the, uh, as state as, as well, both as a professional engineer and a professional planner.
And you represent.
We have no problem in accepting him as a.
Great.
Qualified presenter of information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, the site plan which you're about to reference was prepared under your direct supervision?
Yes, it has.
And, um, by the way, you represent both municipalities as well as private parties, correct?
Uh, no, I do not. I, I don't represent, I don't sit on any boards. Yep.
But do you, you don't represent any boards?
I don't represent any boards, no.
Okay. Um, so these site plans were prepared under your direct supervision?
Yes, yes, they were.
And you're familiar with the site and the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes, I am.
And you're familiar with the Princeton Land Development Ordinance?
Yes, I am.
And have you personally visited the site?
Uh, on a number of occasions.
Right. And how many years have you been working on the development plan for these two parcels? Do you remember?
Um, probably six years. Uh, I have, I took the project over for, from, uh, someone else, but, uh, who had done substantial work on it before me, but, uh, I've been involved in it for the past six years.
And have you taken the time to review all of the review memos submitted in connection with this application?
Yes, I have.
And are you prepared to address those issues which are in your area of expertise?
Yes, I am.
All right. And, um, you are familiar with the recommend, recommended revisions to the plan per the SBRAB meeting of April 12th?
Yes.
Okay. Let's start, um, with a description of the site. If you can just give a little bit more detail than Mr. Bucci did, um, the site as existing, it's basically unimproved and vacant, correct?
E- exactly. Uh, um, I would imagine most of the board is familiar with the site. 206 is on the, uh, top of the page, site's on the, uh, bottom of the page. Um, for the most part, if you drive past the site, it looks like in, uh, a vacant open-space lot. Um, it was used in the past as a staging area, uh, so it's all packed gravel there, uh, for the most part, based on soil testing, it's, uh, somewhat impervious surfaces. Um, the back area, which you see colored here in, uh, dark green, is, uh, the existing stream corridor. Uh, that is, uh, still an open space wooded area. Uh, that stream has, uh, been piped, uh, through, uh, this lot, as well as the adjoining, uh, uh, office building, so a portion of it is within a conduit.
All right. Um, I'm gonna draw your attention. Let's start with the, the landscaping and lighting issues. Um, y- you feel that your office can, the applicant can comply with the recommendations made by SBRAB on the landscaping?
Y- y- yes, and, and, and we've looked at, uh, the landscaping comments, uh, I, I don't see anything significant. Uh, certainly we'll work with the, uh, uh, board's professionals, township staff, on, uh, on revising the various species and selecting the proper, uh, um, uh, types of plantings and spacing. Uh, we've also looked at, uh, how we can increase the number of, uh, of trees in there. And, and this is somewhat of a difficult site in the number of trees in that, uh, in a normal situation, you have a, a piece of property, you're develop, you're, you're, you're essentially developing it all. Um, here, we actually are saving a significant amount of trees, and we are only taking down a couple of trees on the fringe area here, uh, but for the most part, we're not taking down any trees. So at the end of the day, we'll be, we'll be, uh, having a lot more. When I go over some of the red lines from the SBRAB, you'll see some of the areas, but we have some, some areas here, here, um, uh, that I colored on a rendering, which will, will supplement, uh, some areas in the corner here, and then we'll, we'll do some additional, uh, uh, trees, uh, in, in these out, outlined areas and on the islands.
And you included a hedge in the planting?
I'm sorry?
You have included a hedge in the planting? That was one of the recommendations.
Um, on the, uh, eastern, on the, uh, northerly side?
I don't remember what was supposed to be.
I believe it was on 206.
That'd be along the, the state road.
The front edge.
Uh, ye- yes, we, we will add some additional plantings in there, uh, and we'll add additional various heights in there as well. So there'll be some, some low planting, so that the, the idea of the hedge is not, not to have a solid screen like a fence, but to have some sort of screening of the vehicles.
A height of three feet was suggested.
Right. And, and we will do that with various.
You screen the vehicles, but make them still.
Right.
Partially visible.
Exactly. We would do that.
Listen, let me ask, since, uh, we've jumped in already, let me pile on. When you're talking about the, um, from here, the lower left-hand corner, the, the, and the substantial green area, that's, um, wetlands and other water resources, isn't it, isn't that gonna be, uh, under conservation easement?
Uh, it would be, yes. This is, uh, and we already have NJDEP approval, uh, but this is a wetland stream corridor, and that will be maintained in its, uh, existing condition. So we're not touching that area, we're leaving that stream corridor, and we are also supplementing, uh, around the edges on there, but yes. The only thing we're waiting for now is the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission.
Sure.
Unfortunately, they said, "We won't finalize our review until you get DEP review." So we got DEP review, and we're about 98% through DRCC.
But the, I, I guess what I'm getting at is the idea of doing anything in there is, um, your severity is constrained there.
Yes, yes, we are.
Because of the wetlands resources, so.
Correct.
You know, how it factors into the planting requirement is.
Correct.
To me, a moot point.
Right. Which is one of the reasons why it took so long to get through here, because there were, I would say, uh, both agencies didn't necessarily see how we should treat that corridor. Uh, at one point, it was talked about ripping the pipes out, and another point, it was it wasn't, so, uh, we had to go back and forth with the DRCC and the DEP, and, uh, we've gotten over that hump.
Mr. Carr, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna, I know the engineer, municipal engineer has had some comments, and I just wanted to swear to him quickly so he could offer those. You saw what sort of testimony you're about to give in this matter, would be to help with the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your names, spell your last name for the record.
John M. West, W-E-S-T.
Thank you, Mr. West. Go ahead. Uh, I was gonna, it, it, just so the record will be complete, if you have comments, please.
Just one other, one other area that SBRAB talked about adding some trees is the, uh, that back row, there, show the hedge row along that back property line. So one of the recommendations was to reduce the depth of the parking stalls there to 16 feet. That gives another three feet of green area, and, and there would be a tree row that could be planted along there also. And just to clarify, in the wetlands areas, there, there currently aren't any trees, you can supplement that with, with trees to get the total, I think it was 30 trees that were required.
So are you reaching the total of 30 trees that's required?
I, I, I don't know if we, we haven't met with the staff yet. Our, our goal is to try to meet that, but, uh, of course, we will sit down with them. Uh, there is some open areas, Mr. West, it indicated, uh, that were not disturbing, that, that, that we can put some in. Uh, there are some areas, uh, on the right-hand side or north side that we can add some in also, and then a couple along the street and on the islands there that we have already. If, if we can't get there, we think we're gonna be pretty close. But, uh, without meeting with staff yet, I can't tell you tonight that we can get exactly 30. Maybe we'll get 27, but the recommendation is, if we don't get them all, we gotta pay into the funds. So obviously, it benefits us to try to get us, get the 30 on our side.
And the, could you describe the rain garden and show us where that's gonna be?
Yeah.
And describe, I'm interested to know if that's gonna run, you know, is it gonna filter the water, then that water will run into the, the existing stream?
Um.
Is that how that's gonna be organized?
Yes. Uh, well, not exactly into the stream itself directly. Um, the flow is from the south to the north, uh, and as indicated, there's a, a pipe, the pipe begins right about at this point where our parking lot starts. Um, we've spent a lot of time with the, uh, NJDEP and DR, Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission on, uh, on, on how to develop this site environmentally and, uh, within the stream corridor. Um, what we are doing is, is several things in combination to the rain garden. The rain garden is the green strip between the two parking bays.
How wide is that?
Um, it's about, uh, it's about 15 feet wide. Uh, it's basically just a depressed area, a shallow area. Um, and, and the, the, the concept is, uh, as runoff goes across the site, it'll, it'll, it'll run a surface flow into the swell here. The parking stalls along the, um, uh, the easterly edge or, or the top edge of the rain garden is porous pavement. So, uh, the idea is that, that will provide storage and recharge before it even gets to the rain garden. Anything that doesn't go into the porous pavement then goes into the rain garden, uh, and filters out. Uh, there, the rain garden wraps around, also around the parking area here, so there's sufficient storage, uh, to provide for some runoff in that area. The, the.
So, excuse me. So you, there's a pipe where the existing stream is running through the pipe that is underneath your rain garden?
That's correct.
How deep is that pipe?
Um, it's.
And where is the rain garden water going? Is it a perforated pipe?
Uh, no. The rain garden, the, the pipe below the rain garden has no interaction with the rain garden itself.
How deep is that pipe?
I'm sorry?
I mean, I'm just wondering, how deep is your rain garden?
Uh, the rain garden itself's only a couple of, uh, well, the, the surface area of it is only about, uh, about a foot deep. It doesn't collect it, it's not a water quantity, it's a water quality issue, so between the landscaping, um, in, in there, and then the recharging there, and of course, we did permeability tests to make sure that, uh, the rain garden can recharge. It doesn't collect a lot of surface water, because, uh, any runoff first comes across a porous pavement area, and then also some recharge area, uh, as part of this parking lot as well. So it actually receives very little water, uh, but it's an added benefit, uh, to, uh, the environmental constraints of the site.
Where is the water going after it? I mean, the idea of a rain garden typically is that it.
Well, if it overflows.
It settles in and it removes a lot of the contaminants?
Right.[1714.54]
that it, it settles in, and it removes a lot of the contaminants, and then the water goes somewhere from there.
Well, it goes into the groundwater eventually.
But how is it going into the ground if there's a pipe underneath there, a hard, impervious pipe?
Well, it'll, I mean, the pipe isn't that wide, so it'll go, it'll still go around the pipe. And, and, I mean, it's a concrete pipe, so it's not gonna go into the pipe. So it'll just go around the pipe, and it'll continue down. Again, it's, the, the idea is to get a lot of water in here. But there's also two overflow areas. There's an overflow area to the south. So if the rain garden overflows, then it goes into the stream area over, over here. So, so that's how it overflows into, directly into stream, as it goes through the wooded area, and then of course, it'll continue through the pipe there.
Is it tilted that way, though? It sounded like, I thought the stream was running away from there. Could it go that way?
Well, it, it, there's, there's stream banks along here. So, I mean, you don't see them on the plan here, but, but there's stream banks. This is a flat area on the right side of the stream, or the lower right corner of the property. So there's a depressed area here for the rain garden. If it overflows, then it'll just go down a stream bank in a wooded area, into the stream, and then continue in a northerly direction.
Yeah, Jack?
The rain, the green area drains into the stream, and then exits your properties through a concrete pipe.
Through, through the pipe, correct.
So any drainage from that green area goes out through the concrete.
That, that's correct.
I also just have another question. Could you, could you speak to the pervious, perviousness of the pervious pavement?
Yeah. So what hap, there's a, there's a, they're doing actually several things.
Okay.
But just to answer your concern with the rain garden being over the pipe, and, you know, is the water actually gonna go anywhere? What happens actually is, that where the pipe runs between the, the parking areas, that will collect the water, and then it, it, it flows to the south, to an area that's not under the pipe, and then that's where the water would perk into the ground. So there's, there's the larger area that he identified as the rain garden. That's where the water would actually collect, and then perk into the ground. So the other thing they're doing is the porous pavement. And one of the concerns we always have, especially in Princeton, is the soil is typically poor soil in Princeton. Is it actually pervious soil? Once the, the water goes into the ground, is it really gonna go anywhere? And they've done a lot of soil testing, and we're comfortable that with this site, it will work. And Jeff, I don't know if you mentioned, the other thing they're doing for water quality is the mechanical treatment device.
Yes, manufactured treatment device. Of course, what, one of the things we're doing here is, is 206 has, has a pipe that, that drains directly from the state highway through our site to the stream here. We will be disconnecting that pipe and rerouting it around. Our, all of our storm drainages that doesn't go into the recharge area or into the rain garden will be collected by an onsite stormwater system, and then we will have a manufactured treatment device. And a manufactured treatment device, and there's various ones, basically a storm scepter, it'll have a trapezoid, suspended solids go through, basically at the, a type of filter cartridge system in there, gets filtered out, and then cleaner water gets discharged out. It's called a manufactured treatment device. It's approved by the NJDEP, and we have approval for it. But basically, you take the cartridges out, and the cartridges get cleaned and removed. So it involves a periodic maintenance as, as well.
And your intention is that for the applicant, we'll file an operations manual, a maintenance manual with the engineering department to ensure that it's cleaned out periodically?
Yes, we will, we will do, not only just for the manufactured treatment device, but we'll, we'll have a manual that will reside with the owner for all of it. What he has to do with the porous pavement, what he has to do with the rain garden, and all the catch basins, inspections, and timing, and that'll go to the staff for review before the project's constructed.
Can I, just a, a point of clarification here. Thank you for that. But so, we're having a rain garden built above a concrete pipe through which a stream is flowing. Is that correct?
The actual part of the rain garden where the water will collect is not over the pipe.
Okay.
The pipe runs between, in that, that green strip between the two parking lots.
Right.
But then just to the left and down a little bit is a larger pool. That's where the water would actually settle out.
Okay, okay. And is the, is the stream in a pipe already?
From, from, from this point to the north, it's contained within a pipe. From this point, all of the green area, all the tree area that will remain, that's, that's an open stream.
And you run the pipe from 206 presently?
I'm sorry?
You have a pipe coming in.
Yeah. Yes, there's a pipe, there's a pipe from 206.
That will be removed.
That'll just be rerouted. It would actually go right through the building.
But if that's not the stream, Chair, that's...
That pipe goes into the...
Yeah, that goes into the pipe now.
Goes into that pipe that you're, for the rain.
Correct, correct.
Yeah. What are you doing about runoff from the roof of the building? Is that just going on to the parking lot and...
No, that'll go, that'll go, that'll be collected, that'll be collected through our storm sewer system, and, and go directly to the pipe system there.
And then go again into the...
Right, that's cleaner water, so we'll get that through the system.
Water treatment and then out.
Correct.
Okay.
Jeff, can we move on to your marked up plans, so the board can understand what revisions were required by SBRAB and what we agreed to do?
Mr. Rudolphy, one point of clarification. You talked about filing the maintenance, well, you mean recorded maintenance plan, correct?
We filed with the engineering staff.
All right, that's sufficient, that's sufficient for the municipality, that's fine. That's fine. Form of content.
It seems like it should be, it should be, a copy should be left in the town, and the town should be able to monitor the maintenance. There seems to be a lot of maintenance required by the site.
Let me, let me clarify that. With our new stormwater ordinance that hopefully will be adopted in June, there is a provision that they'll have to get a permit, a yearly permit from the town. And as part of that permit, they have to submit that their maintenance, you know, what they've done to maintain their, their system. So as, as was indicated, they have to change filters, you have to have to vacuum porous pavement. So they'll be required to submit a yearly report to the town, you know, indicating that they've maintained the system.
Mm-hmm. Great.
That's A3, Mr. Rudolphy?
Thank you.
Today's date. Thank you.
Jeff, could you please describe to the board what I just marked as exhibit A3?
This is essentially the site plan, which had the request of SBRAB with red line, were the recommended changes that were discussed at the SBRAB meeting. But I passed out to anybody who's like me. I have a hard enough time seeing the exhibit on the standing right next to it. So to expect you to see all this, it's difficult. What I tried to do is make you a small version. And of course, I don't have a big color plotter, so I highlighted in yellow, so that hopefully it'll make it easier for you to follow what some of these changes are.
Could you please go through the changes, starting at the front of the site?
The first recommendation basically has to do with the sidewalks, and there's two, two items there. One was to complete sidewalk along the entire furniture of our site. We already were proposing handicap ramps at the, at the crosswalk there. And then extend that sidewalk to there, there's an existing sidewalk that leads to the office building. So we would extend a portion of that to connect that sidewalk, connect that whole link up there. In addition, we would connect that sidewalk into the site. So we would, to the south side of the driveway, we would extend it down, install a crosswalk across our first traffic aisle, and then utilizing the handicap ramps in here, give access directly to the sidewalk here, so safe pedestrian and ADA accessible ramps as well, at every location where there's a curb. SBRAB asked us to relocate, we have a sidewalk on the island, and the handicap access would be at that location. They asked us to relocate that to the face of the sidewalk, and, and have the two share that, that. And so that's showing up on the mark up there. I, I guess I'll, I'll kinda go clockwise here. If you go to the right of the driveway, they asked us if we would add a vehicle charging station. So we have one in the upper right-hand corner, the first parking space, a vehicle charging station. As you go down that northerly property line, you come to the trash enclosure. While we're asking for variance for that, unfortunately, trash enclosure isn't treated as an accessory use. It's treated as a principal use and has the same setbacks. So we'd have a 60-foot side setback, and it's very difficult, if not impossible, to try to get a trash enclosure 60 feet from, from the side property lines. It's located in the rear of the site. It's in the best location, because it's accessible for the rear aisle there. And it faces sideways, so you really can't see it from Route 206. And it is landscaped, but the SBRAB recommended that we reconfigure it a little bit, and we're gonna provide a 15-foot by 14-foot. That'll give us a larger island next to it, between the parking spaces, so that we can increase the landscaping there to screen it better from the front of the site and from 206. I'll, I'll stay in the top part of the site and then drop down to the bottom part. As you continue down the back aisle there, we have two handicap parking spaces. There's an island at the loading zone. That would serve as the handicap ramp. It also helps with loading. So if you have a hand truck and you gotta get up a curb, we have a...
Let me ask you about your handicap parking spaces. Where do the people who park there get into the building? You park them right at the back, and all the entrances are on the other side, no?
There's, there're handicap spots in the front also.
Okay. Well, I can't...
All right.
There are two on the corner there.
Yeah, we have two in the front, two in the rear there.
There is farther away from the restaurant as you can get.
Right. And, and, and as I get around the front, I'll show you where we're adding the 102nd parking space, as well as the handicap parking space.
Okay.
But we just add...
So you're saying you've got a group of them around the building?
Right. And, and then we also have an additional handicap ramp closer to the building that the SBRAB asked us to do. As we continue around to the front of the building, we're gonna modify that upper-left island to add a handicap parking space in there. So, so that, that will be modified in that area there. And then if you go in the corner there, around the curve of that island, we're gonna add bike rack in that, that area as well, and that'll be screened from 206 with additional landscaping. So just to finish off going around clockwise, we would add additional landscaping along the front, shrubs, various heights in there, and we'll work with the staff on, on providing what's, what their recommendation is, or meeting their recommendation, as far as trees and landscaping. Dropping down to the bottom of the plan...
Jeff, you've also added a bike rack up there too, correct?
Yes, the bike rack. That's what I just described, the bike rack in the upper-left-hand corner there.
And can the employee bike rack, is, I'm having a hard time working, is that just your recommendation that has been added in yet?
Yeah, it would be right, right in along the curve there. There's, there's a, a open space here.
That's the employee rack.
I thought they asked for two.
Oh, we, we can add, we can add two in there. I mean, there's plenty of room to do that. I just showed bike rack and air, and then we can work with staff. We put two bike racks there. Or if they prefer a bike rack somewhere else, we can, and we can add one somewhere else as well.
May I ask a quick question about vehicle charging stations? Can you, can you charge more than one car off of a vehicle charging station?
Uh, I, I don't know much about, about them. I, I imagine there's...
I'm just thinking, you know, 10, 20 years out, you know, what the percentage of electric cars will be out there.
No, I, I would imagine that you can, you can get these things that have dual chargers, so they can go to, to a parking space to the right, parking space to the left. So, I mean, certainly, we can do some research in there. But they had asked us to put, put that up in that area, and we can look at, at what that, what that entails. But we add that area. Dropping...
You may wanna move it so that it's a little more accessible to more parking places.
I'm sorry?
You may wanna move it so it's more accessible to more parking places.
Uh, yes, we, we can do that. Dropping down to the bottom area here, we will be shifting the parking spaces and modifying the islands there. So we'll get that, that extra parking space down in this bottom area here. But essentially, what we're going to do is just, just some reconfiguration and restriping in there, so that we can create a, a walk path from the building. And we're gonna do it in that island that goes from the handicap parking spaces and the loading zone, so that it'd be a continuous path across the rear aisle. And then we would have a hard surface across the landscaped area into the lower parking area, so that people would have a safe pedestrian pathway there. And then we would just reconfigure the parking. As, as Mr. West had indicated, SBRAB had suggested that we modify some parking to get compact parking spaces in here, and to increase the buffer to the rear of the site. So these parking spaces will be reduced from 18 feet to 16 feet, and that will allow us to plant a solid screen of evergreens along the back property line in here, and it also allows to get additional, that additional parking space in there.
How does the, that hard, hard path interact or integrate with the rain garden? Because it sounds like the, all the water's gonna flow in that direction. Is it gonna flow over the path into the percolating area?
Yes. What, what I'd recommend there is that we do some type of boardwalk type, you know, wood, wood bridge across, across that area there, so that we don't intercept the water, and so that we have a dry surface in there. So it would always be a hard surface that they get across. Just basically a simple four-foot-wide footbridge, something simple. And then, of course, and we haven't designed it, but just for discussion purposes, I showed several areas where we would increase landscaping. One of them would be down in the open space area. There's, there's more of, or less trees in there, so I showed some in that area. And there's an open space area to the bottom right-hand corner, the northeast section of the site. We would add some additional trees in there. And of course, we would add additional landscaping and trees where we could along Route 206.
Is it appropriate to talk about lighting at that point?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not...
To talk about that later. Lighting?
Uh, lighting, same thing. We, I mean, we have sufficient lighting there. The recommendation was to change it to LED lighting, so...
LEDs is obvious. It saves you money.
Yeah, we would, we would do that, yeah.
But I am very concerned about light shining onto other people's property. So I would expect that you would shield all of your light fixtures, so they didn't allow spillage.
Right. All of the lighting will be downlighting, basically, lighting that, you know...
With a maximum of 10 feet.
Anything that casts out, and anything along property lines, we can put houseside shields there, so they don't extend beyond the property lines.
Yeah. No, no lights spillage over the property.
Correct, correct.
And those lights will be outfitted with cutoffs at 11:00 PM, whatever the staff recommends?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Is it your testimony, just jumping back into the landscaping, because that was an obvious concern at SBRAB, that the applicant is ready, willing, and able to comply with the various recommendations of the Shade Tree Commission, Mr. Dobromilsky's memorandum, as well as the Environmental Commission report memorandum?
Yes, we are.
Okay, good.
The applicant consent to that as a condition of approval?
Yes.
Yes.
Definitely.
In addition to the other professional reports, I think that you're going for, but that, those reports specifically.
Specifically.
The record will also reflect.
And the maximum pole height, I believe, is 14 feet on site?
Yes.
All right. And were we able to accommodate use of solar power for the parking lot lighting? Was that incorporated into the plan?
Yes. My understanding is that, that they will install some solar lighting on the rooftop here, and we would be able to power, do that enough to power all of the parking lot lighting in there.
Now, there's been a lot of testimony and questions raised pertaining to the stormwater runoff. And you're willing to work with Mr. Scoopian, as well as Mr. West, to make sure that's all handled and approved by them?
Yes. We've had a couple of meetings, myself, Mr. West, and Mr. Scoopian, and we've had some other discussions and review letters. And I don't wanna put words in Mr. West's mouth, but I believe that we've, we've worked that out. I have to finalize them, along with these revisions here. But I think we've come to a reasonable conclusion on, on stormwater management. Part of the complications are, we're, we're dealing both with township requirements, Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission requirements, and NJDEP requirements, as well as the County Planning Board requirements for storm waters. So we've had a little difficulty just making sure that we satisfy all requirements, but I think we're there.
I'm sure once it's stated, Mr. West will have no trouble seeing that they keep to the rules.
Yep. No, I'm confident, like I said, based on the meetings we've had, that, that they can comply with all of the comments and all of the various memos regarding stormwater.
So I just have one comment. I'm just, it sounds like you've had a tremendous amount of trouble getting through these environmental agencies because of the stormwater runoff. So I'm wondering why you have so much surface parking? Did it, did it ever, was it ever part of the plan to do like underground parking for the people who work there, and just have surface parking for the people? And just have surface parking for the people who are coming to visit the retail? So you would reduce the amount of surface parking?
It, it really, tha- tha- that, that's, that's really not the issues that we had. It, it wasn't the amount of runoff, and it wasn't, um, I mean, it's a relatively small site, so it wasn't the amount of runoff and it wasn't the water quality issues. What, what caused a lot of the delays was a difference of opinions between the Delaware Raritan Canal Commission and the NJDEP. We have, we have an odd situation here where we have a stream on the site, uh, as well as a piped section of the stream, and some people in the DEP and the Dean or Canal Commission said, "Well, the pipes should come out," uh, even though the next section is that there's a pipe and it's under a parking lot. And then some people said, "Well, no, it shouldn't ever come out." So for, for a number of years, it went back and forth, and there were plans that were developed without the, with that, without it and with it, so, and, and then of course, there's environmental constraints, but you also had flood hazard regulations as well. So it, it was a complex situation.
Right, so, but I guess I'm just saying, just to take a step back, when you do have so many, you know, sensitive, sensitive parts to the site, I, I don't see a, a big effort to reduce the, the, the surface parking, the surface impervious coverage, I'm not seeing a lot of solar, I'm not seeing a lot of really, you know, considering the kind of site that you have, I'm just wondering where, what you're doing really is sort of above and beyond.
I don't think we should be trying to redesign-
Okay, that's fine, so I'm done. I just wanted to make that comment because I'm, I'm shocked, frankly.
And we can reject it if we don't think it meets all of the specifications that we want.
Yeah, it was, it was never a matter of how much stormwater-
Underground parking is not an option on a site of this-
Right, right, right.
Uh, but, so I would like to make progress unless we-
I, I agree, I, I do though wanna return to the, the comment about the, um, Princeton Environmental Commission's, um, comments and conditions being incorporated, correct? Because they go to the impervious versus pervious, um, um, nature of the parking, right? And they're recommending that, uh, previous pavement, um, that the design be modified to use previous, uh, pervious, excuse me, pavement throughout the site. Is tha- is that something that's possible?
You know, again, it, we're a relatively small site, especially when you compare it to the drainage area that's upstream and downstream of us, um, while that seems like a good idea in, in, in general, water qua- quantity was never an issue. As you can see, w- we don't have a detention basin on a site, nor were we required to, um, just because of the fact that we're in a stream corridor, eh, there were other issues that, that kinda came into play, and like I said, it was a debate whether the pipes should come out or, or stay in. Um, so, so that was-
They are coming out in plenty of places, though.
Uh, they are, and, and it wasn't that we objected to it, it's just we followed the regulations and, 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 and at one point, as I said, we, we actually had a plan that had the pipes coming out, um, but there was, there was arguments from the DEP, not, not necessarily from us, that said, "Don't pull the pipes out." So we're sitting here, well, we'll do one or the other, which one is it?
I think what Jeff is saying is heretofore, the various regulatory agents could not gain consensus on how to deal with the surface water runoff. We think we're there now.
Right, so we've, we've, and I think we've done probably more on this site environmentally than, than the regulations had required us to do. If we were to just to meet the letter of the law, we could've done a lot less. We didn't have, for instance, the rain garden wasn't a requirement that was imposed on us necessarily, but we had such a difficult time, you know, we made sure that we went the extra effort to, to control at least water, uh, quality, which was the bigger issue in, in here, and I think, I think we did a, 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 a good job on it. Reducing the amount of impervious coverage was never an issue with the DEP or, or the Dean or Canal Commission.
Just one clarification with, one of the comments that, uh, in our discussion with Mr. Scoopian was, um, one of the open items is increasing the volume of storage, um, so we, one of the issues, one of the things we talked about was increasing the volume of stone under the impervious area. Uh, another option is to increase the amount of impervious, so not necessarily increase the stone under the existing impervious, but add some more, I'm sorry, more porous pavement that would have stone under it. So we are looking at that as one of the options to increase the amount of porous pavement.
I have a question for Mr. West. Is that necessary only because of the maintenance conversation that we've had that brought up about increasing something that you're kinda questioning?
No, it's not a, it's not a maintenance issue, it's-
No, I meant if we increased the impervious, or porous pavement, uh, porous, you know what I mean, to compare to creating, uh, more gravel underneath. In other words, if it, if it's a concern of the maintenance of the porous pavement, do we really wanna look at, uh, increasing that area?
Well, the, it, the issue is not the, the amount of porous pavement that you have to maintain.
Yeah.
If you maintain anything, it doesn't cost any more to maintain a little bit more, because you have to bring a truck in with a vacuum, so whether they're doing a hundred square feet or two hundred square feet really doesn't make a difference.
Right, okay.
So it's not really a maintenance issue, the fact that you have any porous pavement requires-
Right.
-somebody to come in with a vacuum truck, so to do another, if we did that one parking row along the side as porous pavement, it wouldn't make a difference.
Okay, okay.
But it, it does address some of the concerns from PEC and from Mr. Scoopian.
Okay, good.
Any additional questions of Mr. Carr at this point?
I think we've done fairly well in real time, so-
Now, my, my question is, I was gonna move on to the architect. Does the board feel comfortable with the understanding of how the building looks and how it lays out? Do you wanna hear from the architect, or do you want me to move directly to the traffic consultant? Whoever the board-
I'm interested in signage on the building and illumination of that signage.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to just have, I, I don't, didn't understand the commentary that it should be multicolored. It seems to me that if you want a coherent-looking building, it's much better to choose a particular type face and a particular color and carry it across the whole damn place.
My, our building in Hopewell is all burgundy signs with, uh, burgundy lettering and a white backdrop.
Yeah, it looks good.
It's uniform. However, at the Sprab meeting, they totally said-
I disagree with it.
So it's a, it's a matter of opinion, so we-
Of course.
But you're flexible.
Oh, yeah, I would do whatever, you know, I like the uniform look, but-
Now, it will be lighted twenty-four hours a day, I mean, in principle?
No, it usually goes off at a certain time, like my building, I think it's 11:00 PM in Hopewell.
I see. And it comes on what, with sunrise or, uh?
No, it, it comes on at sunset, like an hour before sunset-
Yeah.
And then it goes off about 11:00.
Okay.
And I, I, well, this building doesn't have, the only building, the lights that would remain on probably, I would recommend, is the lighting that's around the building for safety reasons, not the parking lot.
Yeah, but those, uh, uh-
Yeah, exactly.
-sheltered and shined down.
Correct, that's correct.
Yes, I would agree with that, that makes sense.
Your lighting would be on a timer, right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, yes.
Because we want to, Dan, just your motivation-
I mean, if, if they wanna pass on the architect or just ask me any questions, you know?
Well, you, you've been sworn in, can you address the sign, maybe supplement what, what, uh, Mr. Bucci just said?
Um, based on Mr. Bucci's experience in Hopewell, we decided to go with the box signs that, that have a removable front panel, so that as tenants come and go, the panel gets changed, and there's really no damage to the building that you get with, uh, the individual signs that are mounted right on the face of the building. Um, so as he explained, we have, we have one for each, each of these bays, and depending on how the, the, uh, final configuration of the tenants within the spaces lays out, there may be, maybe some of these are not even required. But, uh, that's the, that's the basic concept, internally illuminated box signs with removable covers that can be switched out with tenants as they change.
One I haven't addressed, Dan, is the building materials. Could you give the board a brief overview of the building materials?
Sure, sure. Um, facing, this is the elevation facing 206, and, and on the ground floor, it's largely brick and glass with, uh, black awnings between each of these structural bays, and then the, the commercial section, the up, I mean, the, the business portion, the office section on the second floor is two-tone, uh, stucco finish, and you'll notice that in some cases, we've extended the parapets up higher, and we're using those extended parapets to screen any rooftop equipment that we need, um, or solar panels if there comes to that.
And those HVAC units will not be visible from the streetscape, will they?
No, they will not. That, this is a relatively small building, we're not gonna be using any large pieces of equipment.
The air conditioning systems are on the roof?
Yes.
And the colors represented in this elevation, they similar to the colors that the applicant will utilize on-
Yes, they are.
Okay. Uh, let's get the ask. Any additional questions from the architect?
I don't think so, do we? Do we have additional questions? It seems not.
Let's move on to traffic.
Traffic is a very important issue.
Yes, it is. Save the best for last.
Jeff, can you put the, uh, site plan up?
Mr. Ray, how are you this evening?
Okay, thank you.
Have you qualified to testify before this board previously?
It's been a long time, but I have testified before both Princeton Borough and Princeton Township in years gone by, but I can give a br-
We all got his qualifications as we did in the past.
Great, thank you very much.
Unless you want to recite them in the record.
No, 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 that's okay, it's getting late.
Okay.
Um, you are a licensed engineer, correct?
I am.
And you're familiar with the site?
I am.
And you reviewed the site plans?
Uh, I am, and just for the board's edification, I spent twenty-five years as Montgomery Township's traffic engineering consultant, so I am familiar with the, the area and the, actually, the signal just to the north of us at Cherry Valley Road and Princeton Avenue, that was essentially my plan to take the left turns off Route 206 and put the loop roads in. I hope it turned out to be a good thing. Nobody's complaining.
Okay, you quit while you're ahead.
I'm gonna quit while I'm ahead.
Additional issue.
Okay. At my request, did you prepare a traffic impact analysis for this application?
I did.
Could you please, uh, discuss your findings with the board?
Sure. Uh, essentially, we, we did a full and, and a detailed traffic impact study, we conducted peak hour traffic counts at the intersection of Route 206 and Herrentown Road, which is the intersection just to the north of us. The counts were conducted during the weekday PM peak street hour and the midday Saturday peak hour, which are the timeframes when the combination of the retail space and the office space will generate their maximum traffic volumes. We projected traffic volumes to a design year of 2019 for the project and included in that projection of future traffic volumes. We consulted the NJDOT's background traffic growth rate data, the historical data for the area, we included the NJDOT's background traffic growth rate, uh, historical data, and we also are aware, because we're doing the traffic study as well, has been, uh, previously testified tonight, there's an application for a liquor store at twelve thousand square feet just to the south of us, we included traffic from that application into our projections of future traffic as well. And what we, uh, determined was that, and as everybody is probably well familiar with, the traffic flow on Route 206 is fairly heavy during peak hours, so there will be some delay associated with people exiting onto Route 206 during peak hours. We've projected that movement to operate at a level of service E, which is generally considered to be acceptable. Uh, the delays are gonna average approximately forty-five seconds getting out onto Route, uh, 206, depending upon whether you're making a left or a right turn. This particular section of Route 206 is designated as what the DOT calls an access level five roadway, which means full unrestricted access is permitted to, uh, driveway connections to the state highway, so we have been able to obtain a permit from the NJDOT for a full unrestricted access point to Route 206.
The unrestricted mean-
Unrestricted meaning left turns, right turns.
Turns from the end.
Correct.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the only other thing I would like to add is that because of the loop roads, there are two alternatives, you know, during peak hours, if somebody is a little bit uncomfortable making a left turn, there are two reasonable alternatives to get back to the south. One would be to make a right turn, go up Route 206, use the loop road behind the gas station on the Montgomery side of the intersection to execute a U-turn and come back to the south on 206, or depending upon where your destination is, you can make a right turn on Princeton Avenue, another right turn on Mount Lucas Road, and come back down towards town in, in that fashion. So I think from those perspectives, the site works well. The internal circulation has been designed appropriately by Mr. Carr, all of the traffic aisles, the parking stall sizes are in accordance with, uh, proper engineering standards. Uh, as I heard this evening, uh, Sprab wanted us to decrease the length of some of the parking stalls in the rear lot to sixteen feet for compact vehicles in order for us to provide a little bit more landscaping. I certainly have no issue with that, I think it's a good idea. Uh, the one item I do wanna touch upon a little bit too is the parking variance, and if I'm not mistaken now, if I've heard the numbers correctly tonight, we're providing a hundred and two parking spaces, but a hundred and ten are required with the additional seating for the restaurant. If I got those numbers right, Jack, I, I-
That's correct.
It, it's been my experience that in a mixed-use project like this, where you have office space and you have retail space, and now we're gonna have a little restaurant on the ground floor, there is a shared parking scenario that develops between the office space, the retail and the restaurant space, because the peak parking periods for each one of the uses do not necessarily coincide. That leads me to believe that a, a small parking variance for eight spaces on a project like this will not be problematic. Uh, my expectation is that, um, if this project is built and it's successful, you probably won't see more than eighty-five to ninety parking spaces occupied at any point in time out of the one hundred and two. That's my expectation based on experience. So I do think because of the shared parking scenario between the three different uses, uh, the granting of the variance, the bulk variance for the eight parking spaces is justified. Pretty clean and simple application, we have our DOT permit for Route 206, uh, that basically summarizes it.
Sufficient number of handicap parking spaces and appropriate-
I think we have five now, yes. We originally had four, we added one, Jeff, if I'm not mistaken, we have five now, and that complies with, uh, ADA.
I have a question.
Yes.
Have you, have you considered a left-turn lane coming out of the parking lot? Is it possible to do that?
DOT hasn't required it. I will say the, the, the entrance driveway is a little bit wider than it probably really has to be, it's thirty feet, we have two fif- we have a fifteen-foot departure lane and a fifteen-foot receiving lane. The separate left-turn lane, it's, it's something that some people like and some people don't like. What happens occasionally is if you're in, you're in that lane waiting to make a left turn and somebody pulls up to the right of you, and you're in a car, and that person to the left of you has an SUV, they kinda block your sight distance, so it's kind of a, some people like it. From a capacity standpoint, it's a good thing, from a safety standpoint, I'm not so sure. Uh, DOT has approved the plan with, uh, just a fifteen-foot departure lane.
Well, my guess would be that you would never have, it's not like a movie theater, so it's not like you're gonna have twenty cars trying to get out of that.
I, I, I would agree with that.
E- even at, uh, 5:00 PM when the, uh, office space is, um, you know, emptying out?
Well, we're gonna have probably, um, i- if I would, you know, take a guesstimate as the kind of businesses that'll be up on the second floor, the offices, you may have engineers, accountants, lawyers, you know, you know, I, we all have flexible hours. I know, I'm, I'm on the second floor of an office building that, uh, we have some medical office on the ground floor, and we don't have a horn that goes off at five o'clock and everybody empties out of the building. We're usually still preparing for a planning board meeting that night, so-
May I ask another que- quick question?
Things are different today.
In terms of, you know, just for perspective in terms of this, um, and considering your experience in Montgomery, I mean, the development where the, um, new Muya Restaurant is, do you know, which is, uh, across from the Montgomery Cinema and-
Okay.
-Chopperite? I mean, i- i- is, are you familiar with that? I'm wondering what that-
The Village, are you talking about The Village Shopper?
Uh, yeah. How mu- how many parking spaces are in that?
Um, I did the review for that many years ago, I, I, I forget, but the, the issue there was the restaurant was very successful, and it was bigger than the restaurant that is being proposed for this, uh, location. I think the issue there is just the restaurant, it was big.
Yeah, there are ser-
And actually, there were several restaurants.
Yeah, there are series.
There's several restaurants in there, and I think that was the issue. And my recollection is, I, you know, the board did ask me to look at that, and there were parking spaces available, but they were pretty far away from the restaurants and from the stores, and- stores, and most people just don't want to walk that far. The parking was there, it was just not close.
I guess what I'm getting at is, I mean, is it a comparable number of parking spaces? And of course, there's a light there.
Yeah, that I-
But of course, the light services what's across the street as well, which is-
The Montgomery Center, yes. I don't recall what the parking ratio was provided for up there. I can tell you that there is a plan on the table now. They're going to knock down some of the older buildings in The Village Shopper and redevelop that whole area and build some new loop roads up there as well. So, that much I know about it, but I don't know what the parking ratio is.
So I have another question. It seems like if the, in the architectural plans and the elevation that we saw, you're proposing a pizza restaurant. So there's a lot of talk about the restaurant being used at night.
Right.
But there is, there are a lot of office spaces and places where people work during the day, right there in that-
Right.
-very small section of 206. And as you stated, 206 is extremely busy, and pretty much every time, I think, most of the day. So I'm wondering if there was ever any talk about proposing some kind of crosswalk, so that people, maybe who work across the street at the spa, or at the Petro, or at the STS, or at the bank, or at the other places?
There are crosswalks there.
I think I heard earlier this evening, Mr. West had indicated something about Herrentown Road. That would be the appropriate place for it at an intersection.
There's currently a crosswalk at Herrentown Road. One of the conditions, one of the recommendations that came out of the Traffic Safety Committee was that they contribute towards putting a rapid flash and beacon-
Yeah.
-at that signal. And the applicant has agreed to that.
Okay.
We haven't established that dollar amount yet, but that's something we'll work on.
And that would be the right location for people to cross Route 206, where there's an existing crosswalk, and I'm sure we've agreed to that condition.
And they'll be able to hop onto a sidewalk?
A sidewalk, yes. Yes.
Yeah. And one of the things that we're requesting here is one that they put the sidewalk-
Right.
-across the entire frontage, but also extend it across about half of the adjacent lot to tie into the existing sidewalk.
That goes to Herrentown Road.
So there'd be a continuous sidewalk up to that intersection.
Right.
Correct.
Great.
I can add a comment to that. When we talked about that with Sprab as one of the requests, there usually wouldn't be a need for that if we didn't have a food use, where we would expect people from the office buildings to come to frequent the food use. So we said that we would be happy to do that if we were granted the variance, because we expect from the office building next door and further down Herrentown Road, the other office buildings, to people to come and frequent for lunch, and therefore come across down to Herrentown across the sidewalk.
So you won't do it if you don't get the variance?
Excuse me?
You won't do it if you don't get the variance?
Right. Probably not. No.
Let me, may I just clarify one thing, Mr. Chairman? I, you talked about a condition. Is it a condition that the applicant will contribute to a flashing light signal at Herrentown Road and 206, or is it another? I'm a little unclear on that.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You've testified that especially at peak hours, there would be some backup getting in and out. And as somebody who often has to turn left on the 206, I would have to agree with you. But I don't, can you, can you talk about what that's going to mean for kind of the impact? You know, if there's backup into this, into this parking lot, it looks like there's going to be some real conflicts with some of the parking spaces there, and, you know, not to mention the handicap spot there at the corner. I mean, how are cars going to sort of deal with that conflict?
Well, one of the things we've agreed to do, and I believe it was in Mr. West's report, is on the aisle that is parallel to Route 206, we're going to install a stop sign at the end of that aisle. So that traffic coming in from Route 206, or traffic using the aisle to the north, has the right-of-way. So hopefully, that'll keep the intersection area fairly clear. That's the way we're going to try to treat that and deal with that.
So your signage is going to direct people from the back of the parking lot to leave, to leave up the aisle straight, straight out?
You know, I'm not sure that that signage has, we can certainly add that to the plan. It would be better for people, even in the parking spaces on the south side of the building and in the rear, to use the aisle that lines up with, you know, I think we can add some signage. Jeff, you understand, you know, to try to limit the amount of traffic that approaches from the north-south aisle that is parallel to Route 206. We can do that.
But I think the concern is that if several cars are trying to make a left at the same time, that somebody trying to back out on those spaces on the right-hand side-
Over here?
They won't be able to have anywhere to go, even if they-
Right. But I think it's, it's a small enough site that you're not going to get a lot of people trying to leave at the same time. And there will be cases where you may have to wait a little bit, but I don't think it's that much different than, than a lot of sites.
Well, what did the studies say about, you know, this, a lot of this size, the development of this size, and, you know-
They say we should all ride bicycles.
Well, sure.
That's the Princeton solution to everything.
I mean, three or four cars backed up, you know, and I agree with you. Of course, not everyone's going to, the whistle doesn't blow at 5:00 PM.
And to be quite frank and honest with you, there will be occasions when there are three, four cars trying to exit at the same time, and people will just have to wait. That's why I said it's going to take, the signal up at Cherry Valley Road does provide some gaps in southbound traffic occasionally.
Actually, the traffic along 206 is pretty respectful of people trying to pull in or come across. I use the road north of this entrance, and I find people give way, and I can cross-
It's, yeah, it's called a courtesy gap.
Even in Russia, I'm quite impressed by. I guess they just hope somebody will-
I have no experience in Russia, but, you know, in New Jersey, I do find people are a little bit more courteous than we're given credit for. It's called a courtesy gap. When you see somebody trying to get out of the driveway, and you can't go any further anyway, because there's a queue of cars in front of you, you let them out.
That happens a lot, I think.
Can I ask a question about the business hours of the restaurant? Are you saying that it will only be open at night?
No. Currently, the two uses we have are more of a, like a pizza-type of restaurant, and we've had some dialogue with a couple different, like a Subway and Quick Check, I think the realtor's been talking to. So they, they're going to be open more like morning and lunch than evening. So it depends on the tenant.
Right. So in Hopewell, you have a restaurant that's just open at night, and so it doesn't really conflict with the daytime office people?
No, in Hopewell, it's lunch and evening. So lunch and dinner, and now it's-
Is there a store over there?
No, no, not in our building.
No?
No. So there's not really a conflict. Lunch is a little busy, but at dinnertime, it's empty. You know, so the restaurant is the only thing open, really. And the medical office, I think I said, two days a week, they have night hours. But there, in our building, we have the medical, like for the office space, we designate that, and we recommend they park in the rear of the building. So we don't have the office tenants using the retail parking. So we would do the same thing in our leases with this building. We make, we have a recommended parking area for employees and for the office tenants. We can't make it mandatory, but we recommend, recommend it. And they pretty much adhere to that. You know, if an office use is coming and they're there all day, they don't need to park right against the building. Doesn't make sense.
You could have a lot of cars there in the middle of the day.
Yeah, yeah. And you want the retail tenant, customers, to be able to come in and leave, and not have to park all the way in the back of the building.
Right, I understand.
Did you say you were having discussions with Subway and Quick Check, or other carrier?
Yeah, well, because we're, we've been so far away from getting approvals, no one is willing to commit a year out, you know? But there's been dialogue with the realtor, and we haven't wanted to do much advertising because of that. You know, we don't want to, you know, we don't even know if we're going to get approved. So we want to make sure before we go. And a lot of businesses, when you tell them you're a year out, then they want to talk to you, you know?
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address this case? I thought you must be sitting there for some reason. There's a microphone. If you come and identify yourself and then get sworn to be truthful?
I'm Charlie Yedlin. I own and manage the-
Just pull it out.
Pull it up.
And then hold it in your hand.
Like that. The, the, I'm sorry.
Could you raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Your solemn testimony about the gig will be the truth, so help you God.
I do.
So help you God is a not-used phrase. You just swear to be truthful.
I affirm.
And my apologies. Please state your last name.
Charles Yedlin, Y-E-D-L-I-N.
Thank you very much.
And I own and manage the properties, the 1,000 Herrentown Road properties, to the north and to the east, or to the side, or to the rear of the, of the Bucci property. I'm here really tonight in support of the application. I think that the, particularly, or specifically, the D-variance for the seating restaurant, eating establishment is a, is something that is very much needed in this area. We have probably, and one of the things that I think that was just touched upon a few minutes ago, is that we haven't talked about all of the people around the site who can actually walk to this site. The Herrentown Buildings, Princeton House, you have Campbell Woods, you have all the townhouses over in Montgomery Township, and there are literally probably hundreds and hundreds of people that would like to take the opportunity of not getting in their car. There's really only, to get something to eat. And there's really only one place across the street on opposite, on the other side of Herrentown, or 206, on the, on the west side, where you can walk and get something to eat. So I think that the idea of having some other options, I mean, I hear it all the time. People say, "I wish there was other places that we could walk and get something to eat." So I think, you know, very much support the application. As far as a couple of the other variances, the side yard, which really pertains to my side, the reduction from 60 feet to 56 feet, I have, I really have no objection to that. I think I basically agree with and support most of the staff recommendations, and I've heard from the applicant that they're, you know, willing to do what they need to do to comply with most of those, most of the things. I do encourage that. Try to get as many trees as possible on the site. Let's see, what else? I was interested, the, the, the crosswalk, I think, is really an important, important thing. People cross over, I mean, maybe fewer people will actually cross if there's another place to eat on the other, this side of 206. But having, having a flashing light at the crosswalk, I would, I don't know what that's going to take to make that happen on the state highway, but whatever can, you know, forces to bear would be, I think, a good move. That's really all I have to say. I look forward to, to seeing the development moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Is your, is your property immediately adjacent?
Yes, to the side and to the rear. So if you're facing, if you were facing the development from 206, I would be to the left and to the rear.
Okay.
And I also-
Is your frontage on Herrentown?
Yes, it's on both. Well, the corner property is Herrentown and, and 206, and the other properties are only on Herrentown Road.
I see.
And there's also another, in the memo, about, about the fence. I currently have a fence that runs the length of the property line to the, on the side, this is the side of the property. And, I mean, I have no objection if the applicant, in order to conform to, for the application to conform, to utilize the fence. I mean, it doesn't seem to make sense to have two fences that would be really inches apart. So as long as the fence is, you know, not damaged or during the construction and kept in good order, I have no objection to, to the applicant essentially using the fence as, my fence, as the buffer to, between our two properties.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the case? You have some closing statements for us?
No, no closing statement. I think we've given sufficient testimony and exhibits to support all the variances and the site plan application applied for it by the applicant. It's also nice to have a neighbor, which is very unusual, who is willing to stand up and, and support applications. And Mr. Yedlin's property is definitely going to be impacted by this application for the positive, and I again thank him publicly for making the comments that he did. We've come a long way, members of the board. This has been a long, arduous project. I'm the new guy on the block, just been working with the applicant for the past year, but I have the benefit of their historical analysis of where they've started from, and it's been a long, arduous path, and they've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in the regulatory agencies and consultants getting to where we are now. So we implore you to approve the application as submitted.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go into executive session. What is your pleasure? Does anyone want to make comments? I assume our attorney will properly identify all of the things we formally agreed to, like the recognition of all of the Sprab and other recommendations.
Yes, it would be my suggestion to the board that if the board is so inclined to approve the application, that it would be subject to compliance with any and all the reports that have been submitted in connection with the application by our professionals and by the Environmental Commission, Shade Tree Commission, and other related municipal organizations. That seems to have been concurred with the applicant on the record, so I don't believe that's a problem.
I believe you promised that when you started your presentation.
That is correct.
So we'll take that as-
I don't, I don't want to vary what your regular attorney would do. I ordinarily, one of my conditions and resolutions is the applicant's sound by all representations made in testimony. In other words, the testimony will control over and above the resolution if there's any, if there's any difference, and that the applicant would comply with any and all other regulations that are applicable from not only the municipality, the town, pardon me, the consolidated municipality, but also county, state, and federal. And so that would mandate that you get the approval from DRCC and/or DEP, or that they reconcile whatever their differences are. And that would be a condition of our approval, that you make payment with respect to all taxes, escrows, items such as that. Those are fairly standardized conditions of approval. The two conditions that I picked out, one I just, one I just discussed with, the other one, I just wanted to clarify that, was that you, the applicant will contribute to the construction of, or the escrow, for a flashing light signal at the crosswalk for Herrentown Road. And this is, was, this is consistent with the recommendation in the municipal, municipality's traffic safety report. So this is consistent with what's already been discussed. Beyond that, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't see any other conditions that would be, pardon me, attachable to the approval. I'm happy to address any variances.
Well, the one that I am famous for is the question of light spill.
Light shields.
But there's been an agreement that, about the height of the light fixtures and the fact that no light will spill off the, go over the property line.
Right.
You're taking care of all of the rain, and Mr. West is in charge of seeing that works properly.
Ms. Clay, you also made a recommendation that we consider looking into dual charging stations and move the charging station to a more accessible area so that more cars could utilize it compared to where it shows on the plan. And we'll move that to a more appropriate location per staff's recommendation.
Yeah.
And there's also a payment due probably to the, to the Shade Tree-
If we cannot supply the proper number of trees.
Department, if you cannot get the proper number of trees on the, on the site.
And just so it's clear to everybody, that's $400 per tree.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I have a question.
I think all this is in the reports, and that's why-
Let's, let's get, until the board has approved, none of this is, is it? So let's get a sense of whether the board is going to grant-
Are there any questions with respect to the variances?
We'll, we'll question you if we need to. We'll, we'll question you if we need it.
Very good, sir.
I have a question. When you say that you agree to all these variants or all these reports, the Princeton Environmental Commission recommends that we not approve this. Are, are they agreeing to that? I mean, I'm confused by this.
The Princeton Environmental Commission?
But the plans were changed after that, after we, after we saw that report. And the revised plans now comply with their recommendation.
They do. Okay. But they also asked for indoor bathroom and shower for bike?
That's, that's one, that's, that's the one thing we did have a little difficulty with.
And I, I agree that you shouldn't do it, incidentally. I, I don't know why anybody would encourage people to bike along 206. That's just a personal opinion.
There's plastic oven by outside, but it doesn't do that.
Yeah, okay. No, that's fine.
Inefficient internal combustion engines and it's only the horsepower that's...
No, I, I agree. I, I did not know that the, that you had changed for this and I didn't want you to agree to something you couldn't do.
They, they might bike up Hereington, you know, to get there. It's not just 206 that they couldn't necessarily bike on. There are residential neighborhoods behind Hereington that might drop people.
Some people have a choice, that's a transportation.
Right. Yes, exactly, that too.
They can come down the back and turn around and come in from the north.
And some people need to take a shower when they're done.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's perfectly...
In order to be driven and be with the boys.
Well, I, I can also testify, you didn't look at the architectural plans, but the, the way we design our buildings, we have individual bathrooms in each suite. So there's no common bathrooms, even on the office space upstairs. We try to do individual bathrooms. So if a tenant wants to add a shower when they fit out their suite, they can certainly request, you know, when they get a building permit. But we're providing individual bathrooms, handicap accessible bathrooms in each, each suite.
I must say, the British habit is to smell bad after you've biked. Everyone gets used to it.
May I ask one last question? Bear with me, it's a little extraneous, but you know, the neighbor here who spoke in support of the, of the proposal and eloquently, so do his, is his access ingress and egress on Hereington?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not on 206.
No.
I mean, to me, really, the issue is, you know, the increase in... Did you have any discussions with him about getting an easement to go through his, what must be parking lot out to Hereington?
No, and, and he would give, have to lose parking spaces to accommodate that, you know, and he actually owns the property in the rear also.
Right.
Yeah.
I had a, a question maybe to staff on the, the flashing light, the crosswalk, which is probably fairly important down the road. When we say make a contribution, it sort of indicates it's not going to be the full cost on one person. So what, what happens with the shortfall? Will, will the town pick it up and stall?
Well, that's, that's a possibility. So the, the issue is we, we start the process and, and get the fair share. Now, we, we know that the planning board has an application next door to this. So they'll get that same condition, hopefully between those two and, and, you know, they're not terribly expensive. I mean, it's not $100,000 to do one of these. And we did get two of them approved on 206 by the Merwick-Stanworth project. So we know that DOT will approve these.
Yeah.
They're, they're operated by solar, so you're not even trying to hardwire them. So they're, they're relatively inexpensive to do.
So it's highly likely it, it will happen at a time of interest.
By and by.
I never guarantee anything, but...
I can't recall seeing one of these on 206, though.
Go past Stanworth.
Yeah, there's two of them.
It's been newly fitted.
Newly? Yeah, Cleveland and, I forget the other street.
Lee or Bayard?
No, further, further south. Maybe Westcott, but there, there are two of them there.
Okay. So let us try and bring this to a close. Do we have any recommendations to approve as modified and talked about? If so, I don't...
We do. I, I accept that idea. I'd like to move that we accept...
You'll make a motion to approve with all the modifications and comments that have been made by various boards and it will be overseen by Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Shriver, I'm, I understand you're an alter, I'm not sure you're eligible to vote. Perfectly candid. You can participate, but you can't vote. You can certainly participate.
Never mind then, I withdraw.
He will normally sit and affirm or not agree with the decision of the board. He has a choice of voting at the end and gets recorded in that way.
Right.
Unless we need his vote, as you say correctly, it doesn't count.
Right.
But his opinion does.
Like, like I said, I withdraw my...
He may participate in deliberations, but he may not vote.
I withdraw my motion.
So can we just then, just clarify the variances? Because there are several variances in this application. Is that correct?
That is correct.
There's for the restaurant, which had been a 24-seat restaurant and now it's becoming a 48-seat restaurant. There's for the side yard setback. There's for the extra eight parking spaces.
Yes.
There's also the, if we approve them not to do the planting along the northeast side and use a fence instead, that's a variance that has to be approved.
That's correct.
And the, the lack of two loading docks is also a variance that has to be approved.
That's correct.
Which we didn't really touch on much, which is actually kind of an interesting thing. You know, if there is a restaurant now, 48-seat restaurant. Is there going to be a lot of loading? Is there going to be a daily food delivery? I mean, now we're kind of going back to this, I realize we didn't ever talked about that one, but how, I guess, we sort of, we never really talked about what that means, a 48-seat restaurant for trash, recycling, are you composting the food? I'm just asking. I'm just going to bring it up. We never talked about the idea. It was a 24-seat restaurant, it's a 48-seat restaurant. I'm just going through the variances and it makes me realize we didn't really talk about the implications of a larger...
If, if I may address that, when the board is asked to approve a D1 variance, which is exactly what's been requested here, ordinarily, it's not unusual for the bulk variances which are requested in conjunction with the D1 variance to be considered and approved in toto with the D1. So in a sense, I mean, the applicant could certainly supplement whatever he's done, but what has been presented is hardly unusual, nor is it insufficient or a derogation of law. The board can make the decision based upon what's before it, but it's not unusual, what's been done here is certainly not unusual at all.
Well, that's fine. We, we typically look at everything on a case-by-case basis.
But actually, the restaurant is a relatively small part of the total population of the building and it's got a trash pickup and so on.
He's able to answer your question.
Great.
Yeah, I can comment on the trash. So what we do at our other building is there's two pickups a week. So when we first, when you build like this, the tenants pay for the trash removal as part of their common area maintenance fees, okay? So you try to minimize those fees because they're pass-throughs. So we started out with two-day pickup for trash and one day for recycling. As, when the restaurants came in, because of the amount of cardboard, okay, we just, within the past two months, had to increase to two pickups a week because there was overflow. And they didn't request it because they know they have to pay. So I sent out an email and notified them because it was getting sloppy. So we're, we're there, you know, pretty much investigating the property and seeing what's going on. So we...
Are you confident the dumpster area that you have shown on the site plan is sufficient for a 48-seat restaurant?
It's definitely sufficient. It's definitely sufficient. And if not, you just increased the amount of pickups so that there isn't an issue.
Right. Okay. Great, thank you.
I've suggested to Mr. Adolfi that perhaps he might want to supplement the testimony just in respect to the loading docks or other items, though I, I will say from a legal standpoint, I do, I don't think that's completely necessary, but I think it would be good to buttress your overall case.
Based on your experience, especially on the Hopewell Township site, do you think one loading dock is sufficient even though you've been considering a 48-seat restaurant here?
Yes, I, I have a larger building with two restaurants and more seating and we only have one loading dock. And there's, there's not an issue. Now, with that being said, the truckers that come in with every delivery, not all of them use the loading docks, but it's never a problem in, in the parking. They may pull up and run in and drop off a delivery rather than try to pull in the loading zone, but it's, I haven't witnessed a problem. If it is, then we would enforce that they use the loading dock area, but it's, it's usually not a problem.
And you can also stagger the delivery times and non-peak hours, right?
They stagger their deliveries, so it's usually not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So I still need a motion and a second. Is there anyone going to recommend that we approve as requested with all the modifications we've added?
Yes, I will recommend it.
We have a recommendation for that. Is there a second for the motion? If we have a second, then we can discuss it more. We have a second for the motion. Okay, is there any further discussion of the motion? All right. Would you call the roll then, Claudia, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, forgive me. There have been, there have been a million different things seemingly discussed in the last hour or so.
I can't hear what you're saying.
I don't understand what the motion is for. There have been a lot of...
Everything they came in and asked for.
And, and everything, if I understand correctly, how many trees? I mean, we kept talking about trees upon trees upon trees, we're going to put them here, we're going to put them there. They don't have a final number? There, there was... There's no specificity right now in this motion. I would just like some things a little bit more specific.
They agreed with respect to the trees that they would work with staff, the town arborists, to plant as many trees on site as possible. They're showing approximately 17. We think they can get more. They're required to do 30. And any shortfall will be made up with a payment to the Shade Tree Fund in the amount of $400 per tree. So that's...
That was testified to.
Testified to the, the tree planning.
Is that the standard payment, 400 per tree?
It's per the ordinance. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can we call the roll or do you have? Would you call the roll then, Claudia?
Ms. Clayton? Yes. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Calliden?
Yes.
Ms. Oak, Mr. Oakman? Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Tenham?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
I think we did it.
Thank, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all. Let us adjourn.